Commerce holiday kickoff. And then there's a EMT leave of absence, there's a full-time police officer resignation, uh, street park worker step increase. Is there, unless there's anything else, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
On favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Uh, pub hearing again was, uh, deleted. Onto reports, Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, uh, presentation. Hi Eric, glad that you're here.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, thanks for the opportunity to be here. It's always good to get out of St. Paul and come see how the real people live. It's also good to see effective government too, so glad to be here and, and, uh, looking forward to working with you as we go forward in the future. Uh, my name is Eric Simons and I work for Flaherty and Hood, who's a firm that represents the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities. I've only been there since January. I just completed, uh, last year, my last term in the state senate. I served four years in the house and four years in the senate. And recovering from that nicely now, uh, but I wanted to, uh, and I've always worked really well with Flaherty and Hood and the Coalition and I always thought that if I had the opportunity to get together and do some work with them, uh, that would be a good thing to do. So nonetheless, here we are and I'm filling in tonight for one of my colleagues Liz, uh, who couldn't be here, but I'm, I'm very happy to be here and look forward to just giving you a brief presentation. Uh, when I say brief, I'll try to keep it as brief as I can. Things that we want to cover tonight are just kind of briefly go over the, the last session, the session that never seemed to end, um, and talk a little bit about what's coming forward in the next session and then just make sure I leave time for any questions or, or comments for all of you. But the packet that you have, uh, the outside of it, the folder, is kind of a, something you can read, uh, when you're really bored and have nothing to do, but that kind of gives you a sense of what the entire session looked like, some, some highlights of the, what we're calling the Zoom session, uh, which we would like to hopefully not have to live through another one of those, but we'll see. Uh, and then inside, there's a number of handouts, uh, that you can look at, at your leisure, but the one that's, the first one, the top of that packet, looks like a chart. That's kind of the one that I'm going to go through if you want to follow along. Uh, you certainly can feel free. And if you look at the chart, our CGMC priorities as set by the CGMC board is on the left-hand side, and then it kind of gives you a sense of where the house and the senate landed. And then farther over on the right, uh, tells you what the final result of, of that particular action item was. And of course, starting with, uh, local government aid, which is always the most popular, uh, ticket for most of our member cities. Um, and again, thinking back to where we were going into session last January, uh, there was really kind of a lot of unknowns in terms of what the state budget was going to be. Uh, we were still, uh, well into this pandemic and, uh, there was a lot of concerns about falling revenues, uh, and really a lot of uncertainty around where we were going to be as a state. And oftentimes when faced with uncertainty, the legislature responds with threats to cut local government aid. Uh, so going into the session, that of course was our priority, number one, was protecting LGA for, for our member cities, uh, and making sure that we don't go through that again. As time went on, uh, finances improved, as you're all well aware. Uh, the state finances continue to, to, uh, come in higher than anticipated, which is, I guess, knock on wood, good news. Uh, and then of course, we had a number of, uh, federal actions that, that brought money into the state as well as our local units of governments as well. So, starting out with no cuts to LGA was, was our big, uh, target, uh, and as we got further into session, it became pretty evident that that wasn't going to happen. So then we focused on some smaller things. And one of the things that we looked at, uh, and I'll talk a little bit more when we talk about what's going to happen next year in terms of LGA, uh, but one of the things that we look at is, is who's falling off the formula. Formulas, I mean, if anybody's here is an expert on the LGA formula, more power to you, but it's incredibly complicated and complex, uh, but it's generally works pretty good, we think. Uh, but cities do sometimes fall off the formula and up, end up receiving no LGA. This year, this past session, uh, the legislature appropriated $5 million of one-time monies just to keep those cities on the formula for one more year in anticipation of what might happen in 2022, which I'll talk about here in a minute. Um, and of course, public facilities authority dollars, this is always another important one for a lot of our cities across the state, PFA. Um, our goal is $100 million in bonding, in the bonding bill for PFA. Uh, the bonding bill has yet to materialize. We expect to see that, hope to see that in the coming session. We'll talk a little bit about bonding here in a minute, but we did manage to secure $16 million in the legacy bill, uh, for point source implementation grants. Bonding, I'll just touch on this briefly while I'm thinking about it. Uh, so you know the process and how it works, uh, the house puts together a bonding bill, they vote on it, they send it to the senate, the senate votes on it. Ideally, they send it to the governor and the governor signs it. And there's a lot of other moving pieces around that, of course. The house put out a bonding bill during the last session that was probably, and I'll quote Bradley Peterson here, he said, "This is probably the worst bonding bill he's seen for greater Minnesota ever." Uh, which is unfortunate because that kind of gives us a starting point that's pretty low. It was pretty heavily metric or, or metro-oriented, I should say, and it's, I think we all agree that, you know, spending money in the metro is, is an okay thing, but we need to have a balanced bill here. Uh, we've got a lot of needs in greater Minnesota, a lot of communities that have projects that they want to see funded through that bill as well. And there's a lot of, of projects that have been kind of hanging around in the queue for quite a while that need to get funded. That bill didn't go anywhere, um, primarily because the house and the senate couldn't seem to come together and figure that out. Uh, partially to blame, I suppose, on the fact that we were all operating on Zoom and it's really hard to legislate that way. Uh, partially to blame on divided government, uh, and thirdly to blame, last year was not the traditional bonding year, 2022 is. So we'll see what happens there. Uh, municipal PFAS, this is one of those things that you read about, that you can read, uh, there's a, there's a handout in the folder there, you can read about this about 10:30 at night when you're looking for something to put you to sleep, because it will. Uh, but PFAS is a pretty important thing to a lot of our municipalities across the state and it, it's a matter of how is the, uh, PCA going to react and how are they going to enforce PFAS mitigation in your community, your wastewater treatment plants and such? We took the approach that rather than use a hammer and hit the cities over the head and try to get them to deal with it, uh, through very expensive and, and really, uh, things that don't really work very well, we took the approach that it might make more sense to try to look outward and look at source reduction, uh, before it gets into the wastewater treatment plant. So, we managed to secure about $600,000 for that effort and working with the solid waste recovery facilities and kind of trying to come together, put together a working group and figure out how we can do that best. Now, I think it was just yesterday or the day before, we saw an announcement from the federal government about PFAS, uh, and what the EPA is going to do, and we haven't really peeled back all the layers of that particular issue in terms of what the EPA is going to force upon our cities, but we're looking at that closely now and we'll see how that matches up with what Minnesota is doing. Childcare, of course, is always a big issue for economic development in all of our cities across the state. And you can see on the chart there that we, we spend a fair amount of time trying to get money into childcare programs, whether it be for, uh, retaining staff, uh, or whether it be for developing facilities or helping to build facilities, there's always a big need, uh, in, in most of our cities for childcare. And we'll be looking for monies in the bonding bill in 2022 to accomplish that, but we did manage to secure about 22 and a half million dollars statewide and will go out for some, uh, facility construction. And we've got $3 million each in 22 and 23 for the Minnesota Initiative Foundations and they work really closely with the childcare providers in their particular areas. And then of course, uh, through deed, we got $5 million out of the general fund for training and business development for those childcare providers as well. It, it's a big problem and, and we know it's going to take a lot more work and a lot more money, uh, but the, the thing of it is, the legislature is very interested and in tune with this particular issue now, so we'll take advantage of that and try to secure additional funding as we can. On the flip side of your chart there, you'll see, uh, a program that's been around for quite a while, it's been very popular for greater Minnesota, is a BD, BDPI program. And this is a rolling request program for business development, public infrastructure improvements. We are going to be seeking $20 million for that program in the bonding bill in 2022, uh, but we did manage to get three and a half million dollars in general fund cash in the last session. And street funding has, has been a problem, uh, and a new problem has arisen in the, in the last session that we just completed. While we were successful in getting $18 million put into small city street funding, one-time monies and fiscal '22, um, many of our communities rely on local option sales tax to fund transportation projects, for example. Not all, but some do. Um, and the legislature passed a law, uh, this last session that said that municipalities can no longer use local option sales tax to fund transportation projects, which is ironic because counties have the ability to pass local option sales taxes dedicated to transportation projects. If you take that piece away, uh, in the absence of what you can generate on your own locally through your own tax revenues, there's really not a lot of options for funding many of these transportation projects. So we've got a hole there that we've got to work on and we're hoping to identify some solutions to that in the coming session as well. In addition, in your packet, uh, you'll see a one-pager on CGMC environmental work, more in, more information on PFAS, as I told you. Uh, there's a good handout that kind of talks about the timeline, the historical perspective of local government aid, how it came to be, and what, what it has done over the last, I guess, 50 years now. And, uh, a flyer for the 2021 CGMC Fall Conference to the Elder Wilmer. Looking ahead to 2022, uh, our legislative session begins on January 31st. Like I said, this is a non-budget year, so it's a traditional bonding session, uh, what the legislature will often call the short session, uh, and it runs through mid-May. And while I say it's a non-budget year, there's going to be lots and lots of money. Now, whether they choose to do anything with it and what they choose to do with it is anybody's guess, uh, but we anticipate that the state budget surplus, and we'll get this in the November forecast, we'll see that in the first week of December, uh, but my guess is we're going to be in the one to $2 billion surplus range, uh, which is amazing and incredible if you think about where we were just a year ago. But there's going to be a lot of money available there and it's a matter of whether, uh, house and senate can come together and figure out how they can best use that to serve Minnesota. Uh, but we're going to be focused on, you know, a large, robust bonding bill, uh, balance between metro and greater Minnesota, as well as taking care of some of these basic nuts and bolts, economic development pieces that we think are important. Local government aid policy discussion has been interesting. Traditionally, LGA formula gets reviewed about every 10 years. The last major overhaul was in 2013, um, and so we're getting to that point in time now. What's different this time is that the tax chairs in both respective bodies have kind of deferred the conversation to the groups that represent the cities. So it's CGMC, League of Minnesota Cities and Metro Cities primarily, uh, that have been working together to try to take a look at the formula, look at some of the factors in that formula and do they work for our cities any longer? Should they be changed? Should they be adjusted? What can we do to make sure that our, that our cities are actually getting closer and closer to, uh, LGA that meets their unmet need? And those groups have been meeting for the last couple of months. There's a lot of analysis that goes on behind the scenes with that, but in, if we get to the point where there's a new formula revision that's agreed to, this 2022 session is probably the best year to do it simply because of the amount of cash that's available. It's historically, uh, wise if you're going to revise the LGA formula to have a new influx of cash to go with that. In 2013, we put in 80 million in new dollars, uh, just to make sure that it kind of smoothes out the bumps, uh, and doesn't impact cities budgets to the point where you were depending on something for one or two or three years from now and, and that changes too much. So, those discussions are continuing, uh, there's money available if we want to put it on the LGA formula, if we can convince the legislature that's a good thing to do, uh, we will, but we will see what happens. And it's entirely possible that we agree that the formula is just fine the way it is. We'll see. Uh, but part of that is, got a lot to do with input from our cities. We just did a survey, uh, of all of our member cities and got some really good feedback on that, so that'll factor into that as well. Uh, beyond that, 2022 is a full election year for the whole legislature and the governor. So if you think back to other, uh, years that are similar, there's not a lot of work that gets done and it's going to be a lot of start to the campaign season. Uh, but we hope that based on the amount of things that need to get done, coupled with the amount of money that's available, that we can do some good work still. Uh, beyond that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions or any comments or ideas for 2022, I'd be happy to take them back.
Any questions?
I think I'm good. Thanks.
Promise to be brief.
Oh, thanks for the information.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. And they have a Stearns County presentation.
Thanks again.
Thanks.
Beautiful. Thanks for being here, Allison.
Thanks for having me. Something's, it's loading right now.
No problem.
Okay. Good evening, Melrose City Council. I'm Allison Voight and I'm here on behalf of Stearns County Emergency Management and Public Health for the COPEWELL Project. Um, what is COPEWELL? The composite of post-event wellbeing, that's what the acronym stands for. It's an evidence-based model and collection of tools that fosters a community-wide understanding of the complex nature of community resilience, uh, as it pertains to disasters. It uses data-driven tools to assess community functions and predicts resilience and provides resources that communities can utilize to address identified gaps, to improve community functioning before, during and after disasters, but we're going to be focusing more on post-disaster. So, you're thinking, why Melrose? Your community was chosen based on the results that Stearns County received from the Community Public Health Survey that was sent out last year. Your community had the highest percentage of response, so congratulations. Also, in past years, in the face of disaster, your community has come together and proved itself to build back, or to build itself back when disaster hits. I want to be able to see how past disasters helped the community come together. I also want to be able to help you plan for post-disaster instead of calling and trying to gather information in a time where panic is high. The power of community brings forth resilience and planning for disasters, gives a sense of peace of mind and understanding of what will happen when something occurs and what happens in the aftermath. You also have a really strong community and sense of community here, so we really like that about you. What the outlook is, um, I wanted to do this COPEWELL workshop with Melrose to bring together community leaders and advocates to help communicate process and plan. So what happens after the disaster? How can we come together? Who do I call? What organizations can help? These are all questions we will be discussing at the COPEWELL workshop at the end of November. Colleen and I had talked and we figured that November 30th in the morning would probably be the best time to do the workshop and it's about a two, two to two and a half hour workshop. Uh, we will be finding ways to rebound from disaster and become a stronger and more resilient community. Thank you for listening. Are there any questions?
So are we just going to go through like, you know, past disasters that we've had over the last five years and how we've responded, or, or is it just sort of to help us prepare for the next disaster?
So, we can do both. We can go with past disasters, so you, as you know, flooding happened, so that's a big disaster that happens in Melrose, but like tornadoes, any disaster that potentially could happen in Stearns County, we're going to look at and see what are mitigation strategies, um, whether they're short-term or long-term goals, um, and then see what we can do with the resources that you guys currently have as a unified community. So, what's interesting about COPEWELL is that it's not a static model, it's a dynamic model. So, as soon as we start going towards something, um, like, say, we bring in business leaders and school leaders and we're looking at, well, how, you know, how would we help this area of the community? Um, instead of just focusing on that one piece, we go, okay, well, who else could help with this or who else in the past has helped with this disaster? So in case like a tornado would hit the school, like, who, who would we call and who could all help within the community? But like another thing, uh, Craig had asked, because I had presented this, um, at the chamber this afternoon, um, he had asked, is this like a grant opportunity? We can look at grants and kind of see different areas where we could look for money to potentially invest in some of the mitigation strategies for disasters. So whether it be like the National Flood Insurance Program and getting Melrose in that, or, um, looking at our, our Stearns County mitigation, uh, plans and seeing, hey, what, what can we do about certain projects and do we have enough money to do that and what can we apply for?
The rest of you have any questions? And I take it we're giving, you know, we're giving you data, you're giving us data, so when we have this meeting, everything will gel together pretty decent, I take it?
Yeah, I'm going to gather as much information as I can about past disasters, but, and then what we can look forward to with like potential disasters to come. Um, but what we're looking at is hopefully what we can do afterwards, so, um, I already have a huge PowerPoint slide, like, for you guys, um, that we're going to be able to be looking at like different scenarios and then how would we kind of assess it and then come up with ideas of how the entire community can help with that.
All right. Yeah. And then we're going to, was it the 30th? Is that what we were talking about?
November 30th, if that works, at seven o'clock in the morning is what we're kind of looking aiming for.
Yeah, and we're looking for community leaders, business, school, um, church, church hospital, um, yeah, anybody that is really a big part of the Melrose community to be there so that they can put their input in and we can get a full kind of look at what, what needs to be done and what would the community like.
Okay. We'll be ready for it, right? All right. Sounds good. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Look forward to seeing you.
I just have to get, Nick's presentation is separate because it was big, and so I, just give me a minute here, you guys. So, I do this right?
Jody, I hope you don't have to put up with us much longer.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Ready?
I hope that will still work.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
All right. Okay, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is a project update on the road, dam and bridge project. I'll go through some of the background, we'll talk, uh, numbers, construction costs, and then talk about schedule and where we are today. So just an overview, I know this is probably, uh, repeat info, but just thought we'd go through this quickly. Scope of the project, replace the bridge over the Sauk River, uh, realign the Sauk River channel to the north, realign First Street, reconstruct Fifth Avenue from main to Park Entrance, reconstruct Main Street from Fifth Avenue to Casaw 13 and repair the dam. So this is just a project overview map, uh, orange is the bridge work that will be done, yellow, the street work, and then we have the purple, which would be the concrete walk, uh, work as part of the project. Uh, this is a rendering of the view of the bridge looking west, I think we've all seen this before, but it's a good depiction of, of what the project will look like when complete. And then also we have to the east here of what it will look like. So it should be a very nice project when we can get this thing done. Okay, onto cost. So, the next several slides, I'm going to spit out a lot of numbers, um, so bear with me, if there's questions, just let me know. A lot of the numbers are big, but we'll, we'll go through it. So, construction costs, this is estimated at this point till we get bids coming in. Uh, estimated construction cost is about 5.8 million of that. Roadway and city, city utilities, approximately 1.7 million. Bridge, 3.2 million. The dam, 158,000 and the channel, approximately 755,000. So, funding responsibilities, just for the construction cost estimated, again, these are estimated until we do get final bid prices. Local funds for the city utilities, dam and channel, approximately 1.4 million. Uh, local funds for the roadway, approximately 698,000. Uh, that brings a total local fund of approximately 2.1 million. Bridge funds, which be bridge bond funds and state aid funds, uh, looking at 3.2 million. And then county state aid funds for the roadway, approximately 555,000. So, funding responsibilities for the design services, that's the, um, design service done to date, go through permitting plans, all the things we've done to date, we're looking at, uh, 342,000. County share of that piece is 114,000 and change. City piece, we started off with a contract amount of 190,000, couple amendments due to some permitting costs, brings that total up to 220,000 to date. For the building demo, that's a 50/50 cost split, about 6,200 per agency from city-county, that is 12,380. And then for construction services, so this would be the work to do full-time construction inspection, administration, materials testing, things of that nature. Uh, county portion of that cost would be 305,000 and change, uh, city total approximately 157,000. Again, for the building demo, it's a 50/50 cost split, about 9,200 per agency, which is 18,523. And, so this is a summary of the design and construction services summary, so for all the work for the design and construction, um, preparing plans, uh, inspection, administration, testing. The county total, uh, again, these are, these are estimates until final bid price come in, uh, 435,000, 156 from the county. City total will be approximately 392,000, which is an overall total of 835,000 and change. Lot of numbers. Any questions on any of those numbers before we get into the schedule?
Yeah, up note, just so you guys are aware of the fact, so at, up until this point, we held the contract for WSB for the design services. We are now kind of flipping that, so the county's going to hold the contracts, um, and Jody and Nick will probably talk about that later. And so we will get billed by the county, they're going to be managing the project once it starts because they're, are the ones who are going to get the state aid funding, so just so you're aware, that's kind of, we're flipping that now.
Okay, onto schedule. So, we're still in progress on a few things. Plan approvals, we, uh, we found out today that the, uh, Bridge Office does have plans, plan on signing tomorrow, from what I understand. It's been a long road coming, but we're getting very close, some, these things sometimes take longer than you anticipate. After those signatures, the bridge funding, bridge funding letter will be coming, uh, we're hopeful, maybe tomorrow, Monday. Uh, again, we're very close with that, it's any day now literally on that. Uh, advertising instruction, October 25th through November 15th. Currently scheduled for a bid opening on November 18th. Uh, we could award a contract as soon as December 6th, pending county, um, approval and, and city council approval, we'll work on those dates, uh, later, but we would like to start construction before Christmas if possible, so we can stay on schedule, which would put us December 13th through 20th, so. That's the schedule and we hope to be able to, to meet that. And then, as far as a project schedule, again, this is tentative until we can get a contractor to board, but, uh, Casaw 13 would close December of this year, utility locations would start December as well and go through February of '22. Channel realignment work would begin in December through April. Bridge construction would be February of '22 through October of '22. Dam repair work, so that either needs to happen prior to April 1st, '22, or after October 15th of '22. Uh, that's a permitting requirement, so we, we have to meet those dates, hopefully we can do it before that. And then, any other, necessary road rail construction after that, that's not part of the bridge, would happen October through November of '22. Regarding the building, uh, building demo, so we have awarded a contract, had a pre-con, that demolition work is starting very soon, 25th, and then, uh, we complete demo on November 8th, there's a schedule for that. With that, that concludes presentation. Be happy to answer any questions. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is there any way this can get screwed up, or are we pretty much a point of no return?
Uh, I think we're in good shape at this point. So, we, you know, we get this bridge funding coming through, you know, the funding's there, we still got a couple permits to get through, but every, all the signs are pointing towards this is happening. Don't see any roadblocks at this point.
Alright. Questions?
Uh, do we, the, as far as like the building demolition, I know it said the quote was 70,000, the winning bid. Did we get any local bids on that, by chance?
I'd have to check the bids, I'm not sure.
We've had two companies bid.
Really? Okay. What's that?
Those two.
Oh, was there?
No, it wasn't five or eight, it was Rachel contracting. Um, and I tried to send it to the local Melrose company, and it kept getting back and reach out. I never heard anything.
Dealing with the river, I don't think we're gonna deal with it.
Might have something to do with the being, abutting more buildings and stuff, so.
And we are splitting that cost 50/50 with the county.
Seems like such a small building for that kind of expense, but it is what it is when the quotes come in, so.
It was under the engineer's estimate.
Oh, was it?
We were happy, but I'm most embarrassed that the engineer's estimate was low because of being attached to the adjacent building. Some of the regulated waste in there, but like we can address.
That's right, the hazardous materials has a big part of it.
Alright, is there any other questions?
I guess one, maybe, if something does happen to the abutting building, where does the liability fall on that? The contractor, or? I guess I'm just kinda curious.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jody, but I believe that would be the contractor, who would be responsible for that.
Alright. Good enough.
Alright, we will be taking action in a little while. Thanks again, Nick. Alright, Chief Mouse, your monthly report?
Good evening. Our September 2021 traffic area was 22 citations, 110 verbal warnings, no written warnings. We had 343 calls and requests for service, last year was 452. This year, we ended on ICR 2899, and last year was 2915. It is interesting to see a reduction in our call numbers overall, and I looked on why or what. Last year, we helped the ambulance with quite a few medicals, and they were running a lot of COVID transfers, so those are part of our numbers as well, as traffic was a little bit busier last year than it was this year, and I don't know if that was because people were finally coming back out or staying home, or I don't know. Anyway, traffic was a little bit different this year for us as well, so it was interesting to see. Nice to see that our abatements came off of the council agenda for tonight, we had three of them that were pending, the last one was truly quarter to five tonight. Bunker said that he saw that everything was getting squared away with that one, so the photos I had from this morning were no good. We had about 48 violations this year, so having three left at the end of the year was good, and having zero for tonight is even better. So now we just continue to watch some properties that are just recycling what they have for issues, or clean up ones and move on to new ones, so we'll keep on top of those as best we can. We've been into a month now wearing our body cameras, it's been working out well, I noticed our officers are recording more of what they're doing, which is interesting to see. We've always had audio, for sure, and then squad car video to go with things, and now just as they're more mobile with the recording devices, they seem to like to record more, and maybe because it's only a month old, they like to use them, but it's been nice to see, it's got good quality video, so everything that's been coming through on that has been clear enough that we can determine what's going on, or what's happening. Said some of it, surprising that they're recording, we hadn't recorded in the past, but it's good to see that they are, so look forward to those to continue to be used, so. Any questions?
Well, I know a couple weeks ago was National Peace Officers Week, and I just wanna thank you and your department for the outstanding work you do, and appreciate for all your help.
Absolutely.
Nice to hear.
Alright, Scott, City Attorney report.
Yeah, on the report, as Chief Mouse said, we had been preparing to have some abatement hearings, and fortunately, we don't need them. The other item there is on the boner action, and I still have no response yet. It's on the judge's desk. You know, she had asked for more briefing. It's coming up on a month since it was submitted, so I would expect that we should be hearing something from the judge soon, but until then, there's been no, no action one way or the other. So, and that's pretty much yet. Not a lot to report. Unless you have questions?
No. Thanks, Scott, appreciate it.
Sounds good.
Nick, you're back up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, just a brief update, other than the RDB project, the 2021 street approval project is now complete, punchless items have been completed. WSB and Gary went out and verified that. We'll be closing on that project once we receive all the final paperwork from the contractor. That's all I got, and is there any questions?
Go ahead. Just a few things, we've had union negotiations with both ABSME and LELS, and I'm happy to say we've reached tentative agreements with both those organizations, and that should be on your agenda in November. The mayor has several announcements relative to some other, we're gonna kinda hit you guys hard in November, unfortunately, you're gonna have to do a few extra meetings, so I'm apologizing ahead of time for that, but that's just the way it goes sometimes. If you get a chance to go down to Sauk River Park, the park is closed, but we were able to get the AED station in before it closed, so that is the outside AED station that's there. And the actual, the actual emblems are, I'm not sure how they did it, but they, you know, they put the city of Melrose, the police department, the ambulance, and fire, because that was the organizations that actually paid for that first outdoor AED. We are already looking at potentially putting one or two up in other areas of town as well, so that is really nice. The other thing that you may notice, if you go by either right where the bike shelter is, by Coburn's, and also down in Metalar Park, the women of today have put up little lending libraries, and I believe there was, they had a photo op last Friday for that, so that is a, we worked with them, Gary's crew actually put them up for them, but they asked if they could just be on our properties, and it's, people can put a book in, take a book out, it's just a kind of an honor system, and I noticed actually, there's a couple folks in town that have them on their private property as well, so that's kind of becoming a big thing. Our library, Great River, really supports that as well. They have, you know, books that they can put in there, that type of thing. So, it's a neat little thing for our community. There's also a group that is formed, an arts group, that will be presented to the park board next week, and they will be on the agenda in November. There's a group that is quite serious about forming an arts council in our community, so that's exciting as well. Other than that, the other things that I have on the agenda are further down as reports, so I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor or Council, unless you guys have questions for me.
Okay.
Good.
Alright. Well, we are skipping action items A, B, and C, so we're on to D. Melrose County 13 Construction Service Contract for the RDB project, and the 501 Main Street building demo of the mayor's property.
I have to think of this one. I thought, hmm.
Nick, can you refresh my memory, wasn't there some sort of a vibration monitoring we had to put kind of in that area?
For the building demo?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a component that put the construction.
That would have been done before the 25th, or is it already there, or is that part of the contract, or?
I think when we, we'll have it ready to go when we start doing that work, yep, before 25th.
So it stays in place during the entire project?
Through the building demo.
But not, not the construction?
No.
So, and maybe you can help me on, Nick, I'm not sure, but, so everything that Nick talked about in his presentation, this is kind of that, it's basically a cost share agreement between the city and the county. There's two options that you have. Plus, I'm not looking at this, I don't remember, Patty, if I had.
It's just a full agreement, I mean, everything is.
Is all combined into the one.
But this one of you, Sterns County, totally has all the details kind of broken out into...
Into, yep, so it's a cost share agreement with the county. And that was really a draft for you guys to take a look at, you can certainly approve it tonight if you would like. It's just a cost share agreement. And then next month, we're hoping to have, obviously, kind of, the pencils have been sharpened, and we'll know exactly what those costs are. You know, we're caught, you know, it'd be great if they came in lower, actually, but it's just a cost share agreement between the city and the county, and then Jody's got everything that Nick presented in his report going out for that.
And as it's stated in the contract, it's a 16,813 for the building demolition inspection.
It's what?
Services, 16,813, that's split, right? 50/50, city and county, okay?
Yep.
It just doesn't break it out like that in the contract, but it's, just so we understand that that's what it is.
Yep, it is a 50/50 split.
Can you make the motion?
Yes, I'll make the motion.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion is carried. Resolution number 2021-47, resolution authorizing the assurance of the sale of the 2,96,321 general obligation revenue note, series 2021A, and providing it for its payment compliance policy. Now, did you guys have any questions on that?
This is for the wastewater project?
Yeah.
So, we issue the general, you guys issue the obligation bonds, but it's a, it's really, it's, it's a revenue bond that's backed by the full faith and credit of the city, however, the revenue, it's being paid by the bonds and the utility rates. Exactly. So, the reason that you guys, it's before you, is because you own the property.
Right. Where ultimately, if the utilities can't pay it back?
You're responsible.
We are responsible.
Yep.
Yep.
Right, right. It is a 20-year at 1%. There was about 675,000, or 678,000 dollars that we were able to get for green project reserves, so this is actually lower than what we had anticipated. The other costs for this project include the 300 and, or 3.5 billion that we received, I believe in the 2020, 19 or 20 bonding bill, the big bonding bill the state had, so that's a grant that we received. This is part of it, and then we are also paying for it from cash reserves that we have, that we've built up over the years to pay for that project, so that's kind of the sources of the funds.
Okay. And I, we have contracts in place for our big industry, correct? For usage and stuff?
Yep.
Because obviously, a large industry leaves town, which I can't, I can't see that happening, but that would really decimate our utilities department, so.
So, yes, we have significant industrial user contracts.
Right.
However, that language, that, that, you know, this is separate from that, those are, but those are contracts, that's.
Right, right, those are contracts, but, yeah.
Alright. Can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Chief Mouse, police officer higher.
Yes, unfortunately, we had Officer Ingafer resign and move on to Todd County Sheriff's Office from our department. She did ask to stay on part-time, with Todd County's schedule, they operate very similar to our schedule, so there would be some good availability for her to work, and she's always been eager to pick up hours when, she worked here full-time and she was part-time Sauk Center roster, so she'd pick up available hours there, so I would believe that's gonna be a good benefit for us to keep her on the part-time roster. With that being said, we did advertise and do interviews related to the open position. We had five applications, which is about the norm right now. When we posted for our job, there was 53 available openings in the state. That number has increased significantly in the last two years. Usually, you'd see about 25 on the site we generally use, so. I had talked with some of the colleges, and we're graduating about 400 students into law enforcement, criminal justice. When I graduated in 2000, there was 900 people graduating into the field. The top four organizations in the state are 425 officers short right now. So, we're not even graduating enough people to fill the positions that are available, so it's gonna be an interesting job market for the next few years. With that being said, we did interview three of the five that were, that did apply. The panel decided on Mr. Russell Lipinski, he is currently working part-time for the city of Foley, and also has a full-time job in between there, he graduated from Alec Tech, I believe it was last spring-ish, I'd have to look for sure, but it was recently, so there's gonna be some training that needs to be done with him if you approve him, but we felt that that was a good candidate for our department, and that he'll fit in well with who we are and what we do out here, so it's good to see, and if you do approve, we'll make the conditional offer to him, pending psychological, physical, and drug testing.
Alright.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Sounds good. Then we have an encroachment agreement.
This came up kind of at the last minute, and, you know, as it's described in your package, the Hollerman property there on First Street Southwest is, been sold, and in the process of going through the sale, they discovered that the shed on the Long and North Line is actually quite a ways into our alley. And I asked, we could, you know, put this picture up on the screen so that you would, you know, get an illustration. The folks to the north of them have got the same problem. You know, in order to get the transaction closed, I guess the Hollermans are already out of the property, and if it doesn't close soon, the people buying it apparently are turned into gypsies. You know, what could we do? So, we prepared this encroachment agreement, and it basically says, yeah, you can, you can leave it there, but it's very restrictive. Including if it turns out to be in the way for any city use, it goes away. It's deliberately restrictive, because I, you know, I think really the long-term solution would be to vacate that alley. It's never been used, I mean, this is Great Northern Edition from like 1900, and checking with clean, and, you know, all of the utilities to the properties on either side of that alley are coming from the streets. We have no utilities in there, it's never been opened. If you look to the, to the west, that was a platted street that the city vacated, so, you know, this alley doesn't open to the west, it just dead ends. You know, the only existing entrance is on the east side, so it, like you say, we've been strongly encouraging these folks to, you know, start an action, start a petition with the neighbors to, and bring it to the city to ask to have it vacated. This is, this is a stopgap that we're, the councils being asked to approve to accommodate these folks. Any questions?
No.
No.
I think it'll be fine with me.
Fine with me, they're used, they're maintaining the property, they're using it, the city doesn't need it, I mean, yeah, it makes sense.
So how do you want the motion made?
Just the motion, the agreement, authorize.
I'll make a motion and approve it.
One second.
Okay, approved in the way Scott said, so, alright. We have a first and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Alright, on the new business. Alright, notice of appointment. Notice of appointments. Do you want to?
Yep. So the council's first meeting in January of 2022, consideration will be given to making appointments to various boards and commissions. A notice regarding the same will be published in the Star Post on October 20th and November 4, November 3rd, sorry, informing residents that those interested in seeking appointment should submit their application to the city clerk no later than Friday, November 20th. Applications are available at the Melrose City Center. Terms expiring this year include one on the Public Utilities Commission, and that would be Mr. Kramer, it's a three-year term. Two members, which are four-year terms expiring, are Mr. Klopaki and Mr. Paulson, both on the Planning and Zoning Commission. The six-year term that is expiring on the Melrose Area Development Authority is Mr. Mayor's. And then the one, or the one term expiring on the, which is a five-year term expiring on the Melrose Housing and Redevelopment Authority is Karen. I'm going to butcher her name. Fals?
Fostensen.
Fostensen, sorry. So, I know, I almost said this, Mom, I just didn't remember how to say a lesson. So that's what we have going on.
All right.
What, it's published twice in the newspapers, and that's the only thing? Is there anything on the city website regarding?
We'll put it on the city website, and we'll put it on our Facebook page.
Yep. All right. So we got that.
Is there any motion that has to be made on that? It's just informational?
No, just information. And then on 9B, we are looking for the scheduled meeting. There is the one on November 18th to review the budget. Are we all good with that?
Should work.
That's an early meeting then, correct? Prior to the regular council meeting?
Five o'clock. Okay. Do we have to make motion? No, we just, all right. And then November 17th for, with the joint meeting with MATA for the housing strategy on the 17th of November. Is there any issues with that? I think we had that one sent out to us, right?
Yeah.
Five o'clock. So.
And then November 30th, if you wanted to do that one that Allison mentioned.
Yep, November 30th, with Sterns County Emergency Management.
Yep.
And that'll be at 7:00 AM.
Yep.
And we will be calling some of the business stakeholders in town, right? Okay. Is there any questions about any of that?
No.
Okay. Well, then we're on the information items. There's the Public Utilities Commission meeting minutes, correspondence from residents, analyst department reports, schools and conferences, state demographer report. If there's anything else, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. 6:54. Well, he said so.